The Monday, March 6, 2023 regular meeting of the Gardner City Council will come to order. The clerk will please call the roll. Counselor Boone?
Present.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Present.
Counselor Ron Cormier?
Present.
Counselor Joe Lawitz?
Present.
Counselor Harder?
Present.
Counselor Heath?
Present.
Counselor Matt?
Present.
Counselor Tison?
Present.
Counselor Tyros?
Present.
Counselor Walsh?
Present.
President Kaczynski?
Present.
Please rise to recite the opening prayer and say the pledge of allegiance.
Almighty God, we beg to thee for bringing us together this evening, inspire us toward deeds and sound decisions, and direct us toward the attainment of the city government. We pray thee to bless and protect all the people of our city, and to show guidance to us, and we may deliver you in harmony. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Announcement of open meeting recordings. Any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium subject to reasonable requirements of the chair as to the number, placement, and operation of equipment used so as not to interfere with the conduct of the meeting. Any person intending to make such recordings shall notify the chair forthwith. All documents and exhibits used or referenced at the meeting must be submitted in duplicate to the chair as they become part of the meeting minutes pursuant to general law, Chapter 30A, subsection 20. Is anyone here recording tonight's meeting? We will begin with the reading of the minutes of prior meetings of the November 7, 2022 regular meeting, November 21, 2022 informal meeting, and November 21, 2022 regular meeting. Counselor Ron Cormier?
Madam President, I make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented.
Second the motion.
Motion made by Counselor Ron Cormier, seconded by Counselor Walsh to accept the meeting minutes as presented. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. I'm going to take items 10942 and 10905 out of order at this time. We'll begin with item 10942. Item 10942, a measure to elect John Richard to city auditor for term expiring February 23, 2026. Representative from the Finance Committee, Counselor Ron Cormier?
Finance Committee is favorable. We interviewed Mr. Richard. You are all familiar with his work. He took over, I believe, nearly seven years ago when we were having difficulty with that department. Has totally revitalized him. The last three audits that we've received from outside audit sources have been exemplary for the city. He is an outstanding employee of the city. It's my pleasure to, on behalf of the Finance Committee, make a motion to elect John Richard as our city auditor.
Second the nomination.
Nominations are now in order for the office of city auditor, and nominations are now open. So nomination made by Counselor Ron Cormier, seconded by Counselor Walsh. Are there any other nominations?
Move, Madam President, move nominations to closed.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Walsh, seconded by Counselor Ron Cormier to close nominations. Other, I'm sorry. So there appearing to be no further nominations. I will, I'm sorry, we already closed nominations. When the clerk calls the roll, please-
You need a vote to close nominations.
Oh, I'm sorry. So there any further nominations? Okay, so all those in favor of closing nominations say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Nominations are now closed. When the clerk calls the roll, please state the name of the nominee of your choice. Counselor Boone?
John Richard.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
John Richard.
Counselor Ron Cormier?
John Richard.
Counselor Joe Lawitz?
John Richard.
Counselor Harder?
John Richard.
Counselor Heath?
John Richard.
Counselor Matt?
John Richard.
Counselor Tison?
John Richard.
Counselor Tyros?
John Richard.
Counselor Walsh?
John Richard.
Madam President Kaczynski? John Richard. Eleven votes for John Richard. John Richard has been elected as city auditor. We will now take item number 10905. A measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Robert Sharlin Esquire to the position of Assistant City Solicitor for term expiring January 1, 2024. Counselor Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. The committee met with the mayor, the city solicitor, and the appointee to discuss the appointment. Attorney Sharlin has been a member of the bar since 1995. He comes highly recommended by the city solicitor. He is a resident and an active member of the Gardner community. He specializes in real estate and commercial and residential real estate. And by doing, by appointing him, we'll have that expertise in the city solicitor's office and be able to bring that work in-house, which we've had increasingly more work in that department. The committee voted unanimously, therefore I move the confirmation.
Second. Motion made by Counselor Tyros, seconded by Counselor Matt to confirm the appointment. Is there discussion on the motion? Counselor Boone?
Thank you, Madam President. I'll be opposing this as I have done in the past. I just do not feel the city needs an assistant city solicitor. Nothing against the person, but it's just my opinion regarding the position. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counselor Walsh?
There is the issue with the appointee about the fact that there are so many different areas of municipal law that are required to be addressed by the law department. And while Attorney Sharlin's experience and background is in the area of real estate law and its many different components, he indicated that he is aware of the many resources that are available in municipal law through municipal law association, Mass Municipal Law Association, through the Mass Continued Legal Education resources, and also the in-house guidance of the city solicitor, who we've had for a number of years here. So I'm confident that although his focus has been more narrow than the general category of municipal law, I think will be well served by the services that he will provide in that field, as well as the expanded view, expanded realm of municipal law that he'll come to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
Ten years, one no, motion passes. At this time, we will take a brief recess of the meeting to swear. Those who have a point here this evening, we will reconvene after the swearing is completed and call the meeting back to order at that time. We call the meeting back to order. We will go back to page one and continue with public hearings. Item 10907. A petition by National Grid to install new handhole in accordance with the plan filed here with marked Edgel Street to install new handhole at the edge of the 69 Edgel Street property Install two to three feet of conduit from pole six Edgel Street to new handhole. The public hearing is now open. I will read the public hearing notice. Notice to abutters, February 23, 2023, to abutters and other interested parties. Pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 166, subsection 22, you are hereby notified that a public hearing will be conducted on Monday, March 6, 2023, at 7:30 PM on the petition Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid for permission to excavate the public highways and to run and maintain underground electric conduits together with such sustaining and protective fixtures as it may find necessary for the transmission of electricity in underground conduits to be located substantially in accordance with the plan filed here with marked Edgel Street. A petition by National Grids to install new handhole in accordance with the plan filed here with marked Edgel Street to install new handhole at the edge of the 69 Edgel Street property at approximately 42.577352, comma, negative 71.982237. Install two to three feet of conduit from pole six Edgel Street to new handhole. A sketch of the proposed pole location is attached for your edification. City Council of Gardner, TT Sarafan, City Clerk. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of the petition? Yep, come on up if you'd like to. You can come up to the podium here and just state your name, address, or the company that you represent for the record, please.
Good evening. Mike Masia from National Grid. I'm here representing National Grid with these petitions. This one in particular, this handhole one, as well as two pole petitions that I'm here for as well. So I'm here to answer any questions, but, yep, this is correct. To install new handhole at the edge of 69 Edgel Street property at approximately said coordinates at 42 and negative 71, longitude latitude, to install two three-inch conduits from pole six at Edgel Street to new handhole. Again, my name's Mike. I'm here to answer any other questions.
Counselor Walsh?
This matter came up with the Public Service Committee, at which no representative from National Grid was able to attend, but I think there's questions about whether this petition and the work associated with it is to be done on private property. Was suggested that the purpose of this and the next one was to remove existing poles and lines from private property into the public street. Is that accurate?
To my record, I believe so, yes, in the public right of way.
Anything further? Thank you. Is there anyone else here who wishes to speak in favor of the petition? Anyone else present in favor of the petition? Is there anyone here in opposition of the petition? Is there, come on up. If you just want to, again, approach the podium, state your name and address, please.
My name's Dave Kenny, and I'm a resident at 73 Edgel Street. And I was under the assumption that only one pole was going to be moved from in front of 81 Margaret Chick. It was going to be moved over 45 feet, and that the existing pole was going to be removed. And I believe that's all I was notified of. You had a good point about poles on public property, which the owner of the property that holds under, so I think that might be what you're talking about. Anyways, the biggest question I had was from, someone was notified about. If you're going to move the pole 45 feet away from the existing pole, how are the wires going to reach? Are they going to sag down, or how are they going to be straightened if they're going to be further away from the poles? And now I'm hearing underground utilities, so maybe I'm unclear what's going on. The poles in front of my property, the pole in front of 81 Edgel, there's wires going right from the pole in front of my house to 81 Edgel. And is that, those wires going to be removed? And another last question I have is, I know National Grids here, but is Comcast aware or Xfinity aware of any of the wires being moved and any extra work that they may have to put into it?
Thank you.
So it's more of a question than disagreement.
Thank you. Does anyone from Public Service or from the National Grid have information to answer these questions? Go ahead. Come on up.
Yes, my name is Alfred Wolf, and I live at 69 Edgel Street. And I think these are two separate issues. The issue at hand is 69 Edgel Street, and that's the pole that we're talking about. So I approve of what National Grid wants to do.
So you're in favor of it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, to clear things up, there are two abutters lists, two different situations. One particularly towards the underground conduit, the handhole here, as well as relocating that one pole as well, too. Now, one of your questions was, is Comcast notified? These are jointly owned poles, yes. There will be an exchange of notice to all communications to buy into this pole. So they are jointly owned by Verizon. Verizon, I believe, these space out to these other utilities. They are jointly owned, not solely owned, so it's not National Grid on these poles. To further answer your SAG question, yes, there will be SAG. That's just, but that SAG is accounted for within spans as well, too. So we have certain specifications we need to meet. So all poles have SAG. We are limited to as how far we can span with certain SAG requirements, and we design per standard, so to not exceed the SAG clearances. I don't remember any other questions.
Thank you. We do have two other items on our agenda tonight that are public hearing. I think that one of them, I think, does address Mr. Kenny, the one that, so the next item, I believe. Is there anyone else here in opposition of the petition? Is there anyone else here in opposition of the petition? The public hearing is now closed. Item number 10908. A petition by National Grid and Verizon New England Incorporated, Edgel Street, to relocate one jointly owned pole on Edgel Street beginning at a point approximately 300 feet east of the center line of the intersection of Westford Street and Edgel Street, relocate pole number eight approximately 45 feet east of its current location. The public hearing is now open. The public hearing notice. Notice to abutters, February 23, 2023, to abutters and other interested parties pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 166, subsection 22. You are hereby notified that a public hearing will be conducted on Monday, March 6, 2023, at 7:30 on the petition of Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid and Verizon New England Incorporated for permission to erect and maintain poles and wires to be placed thereon together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as said companies may deem necessary in the public way or ways here and after referred to as requested in petition of said companies. Edgel Street, a petition by National Grid and Verizon New England Incorporated to relocate one jointly owned pole on Edgel Street beginning at a point approximately 300 feet east of the center line of the intersection of Westford Street and Edgel Street. Relocate pole number eight approximately 45 feet east of its current location. A sketch of the proposed pole location is attached for edification. City Council of Gardner, TT Sarafan, City Clerk. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of the petition? Does anyone wish to speak in favor of the petition? Does anyone wish to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anyone in opposition? Ooh, did you want to come up?
I'm just going to come up one more time. Again, I'm here representing National Grid for the following work requests, so instead of me just coming up every time, yeah, I'll be representing all of these.
Thank you.
Do you want to describe this one?
Yeah, so this is Edgel Street again. The previous one was pole six. This one's eight. That's two poles down, going to be relocated. Again, this goes down to our standards, maximum distances between poles. Sometimes things need to get redesigned to make those spans to improve the sagging between these poles to meet our requirements within SAG clearances.
Anything further? Thank you. Anyone else here in present in favor of the petition? Is there anyone in opposition of the petition? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the petition? Is there anyone in opposition of the petition? The public hearing is now closed. Item 10909. The public hearing is now open. Notice to abutters, February 23, 2023, to abutters and other interested parties pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 166, subsection 22. You are hereby notified that a public hearing will be conducted on Monday, March 6, 2023, at 7:30 PM on the petition of Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid and Verizon New England Incorporated for permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures to be owned by the petitioner along and across the following public way. Cross Street, a petition by National Grid and Verizon New England Incorporated to install four jointly owned poles on Cross Street beginning at a point approximately 15 feet north of the center line of the intersection of Lawrence Street and Cross Street, and continuing approximately 800 feet in a west direction. Install four new poles on Cross Street. A sketch of the proposed pole locations attached for edification. TT, City Council of Gardner, TT Sarafan, City Clerk. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of the petition? Does anyone wish to speak in favor of the petition? Does anyone wish to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anyone in opposition of the petition? Just, just get your name and your address, please.
My name's Christine Piatzlewicz. I live at 1 Cross Street, so right on the corner of Lawrence and Cross. I just have questions mainly and concerns. So back in 2019, a contractor for National Grid contacted me about a pole in my backyard, which does not service my house at all. Currently, the wire, there is a wire down in my backyard, and nobody is maintaining it. Nobody's taking care of it, and there's, you know, I have kids and dogs. And so I didn't know if this has to do with removing the poles that are through people's backyards, like the houses on Edgel and Cross, like a line of poles goes through our backyards. So I was hoping that we could get those poles removed. If you guys are changing poles and putting up new poles on Cross Street, because the houses on Cross Street, not mine, but all of the neighbors, they are serviced by, I think, the backyard, not the front yard. So the new poles that would be going up on Cross Street, I'm assuming, are going to service the Cross Street houses now. So I'm just looking for clarification, because I didn't know anything about this, and since 2019, I haven't heard anything about the pole in my backyard. And then if you're going to put poles on Cross Street, that whole side has trees on it. So is National Grid, or Verizon, or the town going to cut down those trees or maintain the trees? Because I lost power like a couple weeks ago, because the trees fell on the wires that are at the end of Cross Street by Elm Street. So I'm just concerned about the maintenance of them, and if people are going to actually take care of them.
Thank you. If our National Grid representative can speak to that.
So I'm going to start with the pole in the backyard and the wire down.
I think it's the Verizon wire.
Okay, I was going to say that could be an issue. Definitely call that in. But if you're not sure, I'll definitely call it in. So we can start there. Definitely, we got to identify that wire, call it in. That would be a hazard. I can get your info after this. I'm not so sure of the scope of this project, to be honest. It's been a crazy storm season. We've been working like crazy. I can get more of these answers for you. So, the mix of service from the backyard and front yard is, well, if, if you are serviced from the backyard and we put poles out in the front, some of those customers may have or may not have already moved their service equipment, meaning they're, they now want to get service from the front. It's a lot safer for our crews, it's easier to maintain. Um, back to your tree question, National Grid will avoid removing trees if they can. Um, we do have minimum clearance between branches, depending on what kind of configuration we have on these poles. And, that being said, they just do trimming. I hope that answers all your questions. Okay. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Are you asking if anybody else has questions for you? Yes.
Well, I'm gonna, we're gonna, we'll get there in just a second, if you want to come up in a second. Okay, anyone else wishes to speak in opposition of the petition? Do you, do you want to speak in opposition of it, or you have questions in opposition of it?
We have questions, uh, there's.
Okay, you can come on, give your name and your address.
Mark Harris-Moitz, one seventeen Parker Hill Road. And I'm here with my mom who lives at sixty-three Edgeel Street and her neighbor, Al. Um, there just doesn't seem to be any master plan or real answer. Uh, Mass Electric seems to be putting, asking for petitions to do, let's do this little piece, let's do this little piece, let's put a handhole, uh, over here in somebody's yard and go from a pole to a handle. What's the master plan? Why are you putting something in the ground? Where's it going to? Is there another phase? Um, there's some houses that have poles in their backyards, poles in their front yards. We're just curious, what's going on? What are they doing? Are they planning on taking them down? Um, are they abandoned poles? So is there, because they're, they're going all the way around these properties, but they're really not addressing anything, and the neighbors seem to have a question, I have a question, what's the master plan through here? Because all we're getting is little pieces, and on the plans that they've given, it's not really a, it's not a construction plan, there's not a lot of detail. Um, so you can't really figure out what's going on. So that's where the question's to Mike, and I guess he just, he doesn't really know what's going on, um, because it's been a busy, busy storm season, I guess. So the question that we have is, is there a master plan going forward? So that everybody in the neighborhood knows what's going on and what's happening with all the poles. Thank you.
Thank you.
So was this one concerning Edgeel Street or Cross Street?
Edgeel.
Okay. So, as far as master plan, National Grid does things in phases, when we can. Um, do I know the master plan? I don't. I can have contacts to reach out to, such as Rob Trudell, who is on this petition for joint and identical pole location. So, I really don't have a master plan. Uh, it's kinda hard to predict a master plan. We, we kinda get things done as we, as we go, um, service new customers as we go. We don't really plan too much for the future, because things change. That's all I got.
Thank you. Is there anyone, also, is there anyone else, uh, here to speak in opposition of the petition? Is there anyone else in opposition of the petition? The public hearing is now closed. Communications from the mayor, order, item number one zero nine one zero, in order appropriating thirty-three thousand one hundred and thirty-nine dollars from free cash to health department vehicle expense account. Report from the Finance Committee, Councilor Ron Cormier.
The Finance Committee was favorable, the, what a health agent was explained to us that there is another agent, uh, that will be coming online for doing inspections, both housing and restaurant and that kind of inspections, that a vehicle will be needed for that. Uh, these were the amounts that she requested, uh, are eleven hundred new housing units anticipated in the near future, coming in, and they're responsible for that. So the Finance Committee was in favor of this, uh, and I move the order.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Ron Cormier, seconded by Counselor John Lawitz to approve the order. Is there discussion on the motion? Counselor Matt?
Um, yes, Madam President. Um, when I received the package, um, I was concerned about the amount that was being requested. Um, so I contacted the mayor and the, uh, the Director Saunders from the Board of Health. Um, I went and looked at the inventory of Salvador Autos, and since they had asked for the quote on February fourteen, um, their lower priced models became available. Um, so the Director of the Board of Health reached out to Salvador Autos and, um, and is willing to reduce the amount and get a, um, least expensive model of what she's requesting. So I'm gonna move to amend the item by reducing the order by five thousand one hundred dollars to a total amount of twenty-eight thousand and thirty-nine dollars. And copies of the new purchase agreement, um, are here, for each council.
Motion to amend by five thousand one hundred dollars, um, to make the total twenty-eight thousand thirty-nine dollars.
Correct.
Made by Counselor Matt.
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Tisone. Is there discussion?
Madam.
Counselor Cormier.
Would have been nice if the Finance Committee had been made aware of this a little bit sooner, uh, than just, uh, as of this moment. I am assuming that your figures are correct, and does this have the blessing of the Board of Health agent? Because we did speak with her, and the amount at that time was thirty, which was the reason we appropriate, we recommend the appropriation we have. I see the mayor perhaps would like to enlighten us on this, but, uh, it comes as a bit of a surprise to the Finance Committee.
Uh, further discussion? Mayor Nicholson?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, after Counselor Matt reached out to Director Saunders and I, uh, the director herself did reach out to Salvador's, which is where this, uh, number came from. She says that this fits all the needs of her department for what she's looking for, uh, and that's where this number came from. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Further discussion on the motion to amend? Counselor Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I was non-support of the original motion, uh, for this order as it's a vehicle for an employee that doesn't exist yet, for a role that has not yet been posted. Um, I believe we have a little more time to look into this expense and come back with some analysis and a more economical and complete proposal by the department. Um, I, I, I think it's good to see the amended, uh, proposal for a lower amount. However, I still believe that, um, I'll be voting against it, because, uh, as we try to do on any item to make the best decision we can, uh, this item has no report on it, why this vehicle best suits the department at any price. Maybe it would be best for the department to submit a report on their fleet and what needs there are to complete their responsibilities in additional request. Thank you.
Counselor, further discussion, Counselor Matt?
Um, I just want to address a couple of things here, um, in regards to Counselor Cormier's concerns. Um, when receiving the, the packet for the, the, um, council meeting tonight, um, I did my, my own homework and my own research, and, um, the, and emailed the mayor and the Director of the Board of Health, um, yesterday, and got this information today, and that's why the Finance Committee didn't get any sooner. Um, in, in the questions that I had regarding this item, in regards to, uh, Counselor Tyros's, um, concerns, um, I had a lot of the same concerns, and she did address, um, all my concerns as to why this vehicle was needed. Um, so, uh, I, at first was hesitant, but now I'm in favor of this order. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counselor Boone?
Thank you, excuse me, thank you, Madam President. Um, two things. One, one, I applaud Counselor Matt for getting her, us a discount on, on price. But Counselor Tyros also brings up another point, what's the rush? And the, the third thing I'd like to ask is whether or not the Finance Committee or anybody has considered a mileage reimbursement? Because I'm told, or I saw, that they're gonna park it in the Milton parking lot most of the time, but only use it for business. So why don't we do a mileage reimbursement? When I, when I, when I worked for, uh, my company and I was on, I was traveling, when I was on business, I would get a mileage reb- reimbursement. So why do we have to buy a whole car and, and like sit it in a parking lot instead of just giving a reimbursement for their personal car? Granted, the reimbursement rate actually is quite high right now, to be honest. I looked it up, sixty-five cents per mile. But, the point is, have we considered that? And, and why not? If we haven't, not only this department, but others. So I am definitely gonna be opposed to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor, further discussion? This is on the motion to amend. The clerk will call the roll on the motion to amend.
Counselor Boone?
No.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Ronald Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor General Lawitz?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Matt?
Yes.
Counselor Tisone?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
No.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
President Kaczynski?
Yes. Nine yeas, two noes, the motion passes. So, the motion made by Counselor Ron Cormier, seconded by, uh, Counselor General Lawitz, we are now voting on the amended item, in order appropriating twenty-eight thousand thirty-nine dollars from free cash to health department vehicle expense account. Is there discussion on the motion? Counselor Boone?
Thank you, Madam President. For a second time, uh, through the chair to the Finance Committee, have they considered doing a mileage reimbursement? And if not, I, I guess I'm looking for an answer, whether or not that's been a consideration going forward. If I can get any answer.
It has not.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counselor Heath?
I just had a question. Um, I was sitting here and I was looking at the vehicle use policy, and there's a lot of, uh, I mean, it was made in, what, twenty, thirteen, ten years ago? And I was wondering if we can go ahead and look at that to get it updated and take some of those blackouts in the first twelve pages. There's a lot of blackouts in that right there, where, if you look at it on there, you, you know, there's a lot of, I just think it needs to be updated. That's all.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counselor Tisone?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Uh, during our public safety meeting, uh, we just, uh, this was, this came up as well, and, um, just to add a little bit of light, and I think most of you know, um, with this position that we do have, this person needs to respond to emergencies, respond to broken pipes in apartment buildings for the safety of people in those, um, department, apartment buildings when it's freezing cold outside. Um, do inspections throughout the city. Uh, there's multitudes of things that the, the Public Health Department has to do, and, and I will be in support of, of this vehicle for this individual, um, that is to be hired. Um, but I just want us to think about all those pieces as well.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Boone?
No.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Ronald Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor General Lawitz?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Matt?
Yes.
Counselor Tisone?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
No.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
President Kaczynski?
Yes. Nine yeas, two noes, the motion passes. Item one zero nine one one, in order appropriating three thousand six hundred ninety dollars from free cash to City Clerk Professional Services Account. Counselor Ron Cormier?
Finance Committee met with the clerk on this. This is to update the software that they use for licensing requirements. The prior, uh, software program is no longer available from, uh, I think, a now-defunct provider. This will put us on the same, uh, they'll be using the same provider as they do with all of the other departments. Um, Finance Committee was in favor of this, and I move the order.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Ron Cormier, seconded by Counselor General Lawitz to approve the order. Is there discussion on the motion? Counselor General Lawitz?
Just to add a little further, this is for the dog licenses, and this is just a one-time cost of getting that, those forms as part of the system. Going forward, it is gonna be part of the annual cost, um, without addition. So this is a one-time expenditure. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Boone?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Ronald Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor General Lawitz?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Matt?
Yes.
Counselor Tisone?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
President Kaczynski?
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item one zero nine one two, in order appropriating eight thousand nine hundred dollars from free cash to FAA Airport Master Plan Professional Services Account, City Port, report from the Finance Committee, Counselor Ron Cormier.
Finance Committee met on this and was favorable. This is our, our match. The re, uh, the city is required, the airport commission is required to update its master plan, uh, for every five years. Recently, we, uh, voted on accepting a very substantial grant from the FAA and so on, uh, to rebuild the runway and the taxiway. Um, in order to apply for any of these grants, you have to have an active and updated master plan. And the bulk of it is being paid for, again, by the FAA and Mass DOT. The Finance Committee was in favor, and I move the order.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Ron Cormier, seconded by Counselor General Lawitz to pass the order. Is there discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Boone?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Ronald Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor General Lawitz?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Matt?
Yes.
Counselor Tisone?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
President Kaczynski?
Yes. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item one zero nine one three, in order rescinding the loan order relating to Elm Street School repairs. Report from the Finance Committee, Counselor General Lawitz.
Thank you, Madam President. Finance Committee discussed this order, along with the following sixteen, uh, items after it. Um, and was in favor of all of them. These are, uh, orders rescinding the loans made by, um, this council in the past. Some, as stated in the letters, um, some cases progress are fully complete and funding exhausted, others the funding was used, um, and some of the balances remain unauthorized or the funding, uh, remainder of the funds were never used. It's really the housekeeping matter to clean up the books, the details. As I said, if each is laid out materials, if there's specific questions, um, I will do my best to answer them on each of them. Uh, further on in our packet, item number one zero nine three nine, um, is regarding all these debts, um, spreadsheet detailing their status. Uh, and item one zero nine four three is notification from the mayor actually providing us with the statement of indebtedness, um, for all the loans, um, that are out there. Uh, Finance, as I said, Committee was in favor, and I move to pass, um, orders, um, one zero nine one three through one zero nine two nine.
Motion made by Counselor General Lawitz, seconded by Counselor Boone. I'm gonna read the orders individually one time. These, this is a roll call vote, unless there's anyone who objects to us grouping them all together under one roll call vote. Is there any objection to that? Okay. Item number one zero nine one, so this is a motion made by Counselor General Lawitz, seconded by Counselor Boone, to pass orders, one zero nine one three, in order rescinding the loan order relating to Elm Street School repairs. Item one zero nine one four, in order rescinding the loan order relating to the replacement of pole filter at the Crystal Lake Water Treatment Facility. Item one zero nine one five, in order rescinding the loan order relating to Watkins Field Renovations. Item one zero nine one six, in order rescinding the loan order relating to the DPW Storage Building Construction. Item one zero nine one seven, in order rescinding the loan order relating to the Waterford Street School feasibility study. Item one zero nine one eight, in order rescinding the loan order relating to Snake Pond Well repairs. Item one zero nine one nine, in order rescinding the loan order relating to the acquisition of Amelia, of the Amelia property. Item one zero nine two zero, in order rescinding the loan order relating to various capital expenditures. Item one zero nine two one, in order rescinding the loan order relating to water reconstruction, infrastructure paving work. Item one zero nine two two, in order rescinding the loan order relating to the acquisition of the Amelia property off of Leo Drive Open Space. One zero nine two three, in order rescinding the loan order relating to the Complete Streets Downtown Improvement Project. One zero nine two four, in order rescinding the loan order relating to GHS lab and boiler upgrades. One zero nine two five, in order rescinding the loan order relating to water treatment facility upgrades. One zero nine two six, in order rescinding the loan order relating to the Water Infrastructure Improvement Project. One zero nine two seven, in order rescinding the loan order relating to- One zero nine two seven, an order rescinding the loan order relating to water storage tank repairs. One zero nine two eight, an order rescinding the loan order relating to sewer main installation and pump station upgrades. One zero nine two nine, an order rescinding the loan order relating to Gardner Middle School improvements. Please tell me I did not miss anything on that list. Is there discussion on the motion? Counsel Boone?
Thank you, Madam President. I applaud the mayor for trying to clean up the books. I saw some things are over ten years old. So, it's, it's great that we're finally paying attention and cleaning up the books. And I'm sure our city auditor that we voted tonight was a big part of it, John Richards. So, I appreciate that. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Walsh?
Yes, I too commend the mayor and the auditing department for bringing these forward and, and bringing our books up to order. As Counsel Boone suggests, many of these, all of these orders are a number of years old, some of them very old. These loan orders that are outstanding. And it's a little surprising to me that our auditing has never addressed the issue, to my knowledge, addressed the issue of taking care of these, the rescission of these loan orders that are no longer active or needed. And so, it just makes me curious whether this is an item which is looked at by our auditors, and if not, it should be. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Ronald Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel General Lawitz?
Yes.
Counsel Harder?
Yes.
Counsel Heath?
Yes.
Counsel Matt?
Yes.
Counsel Tissom?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kozinski?
Yes. Eleven yeas. The motion passes. Communications, item one zero nine three zero, a measure authorizing a five-year contract period for school food services. Report from the Finance Committee, Counsel Ron Cormier.
Finance Committee is favorable. We've done this in the past. We hope to get a better bid by going for a five-year contract than three. But it takes the council authorization to do so. So I do move the authorization.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel General Lawitz to approve the authorization. Is there discussion on the motion? Counsel Matt?
I just think it's important for, if those who did not watch the Finance Committee meeting, you know, with the school food service as well as the next item, that Counsel Ron Cormier made sure to ask Director Cormier from purchasing that the city could get out of those contracts if we are not satisfied, which is, is really important for, for everyone to know. Thank you.
Thank you for reminding me. This is a yearly renewal, even though it's for five years.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Item one zero nine three one, a measure authorizing a five-year contract period for school custodial services. Report from the Finance Committee, Counsel Ron Cormier.
Finance Committee was favorable. The same report applies to this, so I move the authorization.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel General Lawitz to, to grant the authorization. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Item one zero nine three two, a measure authorizing a five-year contract period for golf cart rentals. Report from the Finance Committee, Counsel Ron Cormier.
Finance Committee was favorable on this. Again, the same situation applies. This is being done a little bit earlier than the end of the prior contract. But there is such a lead time on acquiring equipment nowadays, as we are all aware. But the Finance Committee was favorable, and I move the authorization.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel Tyros to grant the authorization. Is there discussion on the motion? Counsel General Lawitz?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to abstain from voting on this item.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Ten yeas, one abstention. Motion passes. Item one zero nine three three, notification of city involvement opioid lawsuit settlement, Allegra, sixty thousand five, sixty thousand five hundred forty-seven dollars and fifty-eight cents. Counsel General Lawitz?
Thank you, Madam President. This notification, all the way down through item one zero nine three eight, are related to the opioid settlement that the state of Massachusetts is involved with, and each city and town is getting a portion of. The items, item one zero nine three eight outlines the total Gardner has received from, and will receive from now until two thousand thirty-eight. The settlements, each of these settlements pay a different amount on different times, periods. So, it does vary what we get each year. But overall, from now until two thousand thirty-eight, we will be getting one point one seven million dollars. The, these are just notifications, so I moved to, moved to place the items on file.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel General Lawitz, seconded by Counsel Ron Cormier, to place items one zero nine three three through one zero nine three on file. So, one zero nine three three, as I read it, one zero nine three four, notification of city involvement opioid lawsuit settlement, CVS, one hundred thirty-four thousand four hundred thirty-five dollars seventy-nine cents. Note, one zero nine three five, notification of city involvement in opioid lawsuit settlement, Walgreens, one hundred forty-six thousand one hundred eighty-four dollars and eighty-four cents. One zero nine three six, notification of city involvement of opioid lawsuit settlement, Tiva, one hundred one thousand six hundred thirty-two dollars and twelve cents. Notification of city involvement in opioid lawsuit settlement, Walmart, seventy-six thousand one hundred twenty-eight dollars. And one zero nine three eight, notification regarding the status of opioid manufacturer settlement funds. Is there any objection to voting on all of these items grouped together? There's no objection. Is there any discussion on the motion? Counsel Boone?
Thank you, Madam President. I saw there was several restrictions, and I was wondering whether or not, through the chair, to the Finance Committee, if we do get that money, where is it going to be placed, and what's going to happen going forward?
Counsel Cormier?
Not that long ago, we approved a position at the Police Department, as well as in the Board of Health, to deal with opioid situations. Police Department was to, I believe, to give them counseling assistance for, for things like that. There are certain areas where the monies can be used to take care of those costs. But they are restricted in the sense that they have to be used towards drug-related events. But, yeah, we also contracted with Gamma for some of these services, counseling services, and so on. So yes, there is a plan in place, and those are two or three of them that come to mind at the time. Very good. Thank you, Counsel Cormier. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Item one zero nine three nine, notification regarding the status of authorized unissued debt. Report from the Finance Committee, Counsel Ron Cormier.
Finance Committee is favorable. This is a normal thing. Somebody wants to, they, they use block grant monies in the past. I think this has been ten, twelve years ago. We have to respect their privacy, so their name is not given. But they're refinancing their property, and they need us to take a secondary position on, on a mortgage. And it's, 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 these have come up before us in the past. So I move the execution of this.
I think, so that's one zero nine four zero.
I, but I did like his job.
You did. I don't want to stop you, Counselor. So, one zero, one zero nine four zero is the next item, which was the explanation. Want to go back to one zero nine three nine?
I think.
That one's.
Counsel General Lawitz?
Thank you. Sorry about that. This notification is just regarding the, I referenced it before, we talked about the rescission orders. It's regarding the status of the authorized unissued debt, and outlines that. I move to place this item on file.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel General Lawitz, seconded by Counsel Tyros, to place the notification on file. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Item one zero nine four zero, a measure authorizing the mayor to execute this ordination for case number ten dash two eight three for purpose of the Community Development Housing Rehabilitation Program. Counsel Ron Cormier?
I've already reported on this. I move.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel General Lawitz to grant the authorization. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Item one zero nine four three, a notification from the mayor regarding city current statement of indebtedness. Counsel General Lawitz?
Thank you, Madam President. Again, I was referencing this item during the rescission orders. It's a statement provided annually to the Mass Department of Revenue, and I move to place this item on file.
Motion made by Counsel General Lawitz, seconded by Counsel Craig Cormier, to place the notification on file. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Petitions, applications, communications, et cetera. Item one zero nine four one, a measure authorizing acceptance of Mass General Law Chapter Forty-one subsection one ten A, closing public office operations on Saturdays. Report from the Finance Committee, Counsel General Lawitz?
Thank you, Madam President. The Finance Committee was favorable on this item. At the Finance Committee meeting, we heard from both the mayor and the city clerk. The Votes Act requires city halls to be open, or town halls to be open, a certain number of Saturdays per year, unless certain provisions are adopted. This will change the requirement to have four hours on Saturdays, to having registration window end at five P.M. on Fridays. The clerk, when asked about it, stated that zero people showed up to register on Saturday. So we're expending resources, and no one's taking advantage of that time slot. There are a multitude of ways to register to vote now that people do use. This has no way in affecting the mail-in voting or anything of that nature. As I said, the Finance Committee was in favor, and I move the measure.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel General Lawitz, seconded by Counsel Ron Cormier, to grant authorization. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Item one zero nine four two was taken up at the beginning of the meeting. Reports of standing committees, Finance Committee, item one zero eight nine four, an order appropriating sixty thousand dollars from free cash to the mayor's department professional services account. Counsel General Lawitz?
Thank you, Madam President. This item was before the council last meeting, where it was referred back to the Finance Committee for further information. This item is to use an outside firm to help apply for the multitude of grants that are out there at the federal level right now that do expire in a short time span. We have received a contract outlining the scope of services from the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission. The, as pointed out on some of the paperwork we have in front of us, one of the numbers on there is wrong, where it totals up some of the costs, where it says for forty-six thousand seven hundred nineteen dollars. If you actually add those numbers up, it is fifty-eight, fifty-eight thousand dollars, and the two thousand dollars, I believe, of mailing, printing miscellaneous, travel printing and miscellaneous expenses, gets to the sixty thousand. The State Finance Committee was favorable. Director Biergard and his, said his staff is currently managing over seven million in grants and does not have the capacity to write or manage anymore with the influx of this size. And I, I move the order.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel General Lawitz, seconded by Counsel Ron Cormier, to approve the order. Is there discussion on the motion? Counsel Walsh?
Yes, I fully, I came prepared after reviewing the scope of services and the information contained in the original document. Fully came prepared to move to amend the order by reducing it by some eleven thousand dollars. And it turned out that the, the addition of the scope of services was, was incorrect and was perhaps cut and pasted from some other, or left behind from some other proposal, apparently. Numbers do add up now. The scope of services indicates that this runs through January, through June of two thousand twenty-four. So that's another year or so for the identification, securing, and, and administration of these various grants that hopefully we are able to obtain. I just hope that the consultant here is better at securing and administering grids than they are at simple arithmetic. And with that, I'll be supporting the motion.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counsel Cormier?
Yes, one of the things the Finance Committee did ask of the mayor is to receive monthly, if not more often, but at least monthly updates on the success in the grants that they've been looking for, for these various departments. We are aware that the state has even gone this route because there are so many federal grants for the state to apply. This is a unique time in our history. This is, this is a one-shot deal. Many of these, we've already missed out maybe on a few of these. I know, we've talked to the Director Biergard, and again, they're swamped, as other departments are. One of the advantages of doing it this way is it's certainly better than adding another individual to our employee. This is outside employment. We pay for the services rendered. We're not paying for benefits and so on. And it's directly related to the, if you will, we hold, to the services that they'll get and the grants they'll be able to acquire. But the one thing we were adamant about was receiving a monthly report, and the mayor assured us that we would. So I will gladly support this at this point.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Ronald Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel General Lawitz?
Yes.
Counsel Harder?
Yes.
Counsel Heath?
Yes.
Counsel Matt?
Yes.
Counsel Tissom?
Yes.
Counsel Tyros?
Yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kozinski?
Yes. Eleven yeas. The motion passes. Item one zero eight eight five, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner, Chapter one seventy-one thereof entitled personnel to change compensation schedule one, yearly salaries, mayor, city councils, and school committee. Report from the Finance Committee, Counsel General Lawitz?
Thank you, Madam President. The, as required by ordinance, the Finance Committee met on this item to recommend a compensation change, if any, to the full council. At several of our previous informal, informal council meetings, as well as previous Finance Committee meetings, this has been discussed, and our thoughts have been out there on these raises. Finance Committee was unanimously in favor of the two percent raise compounded annually, going back to when the last raise was, and, which I believe is titled "The New Proposal" in our packet. And in order to allow for further deliberation, I move to send this item to first printing.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel General Lawitz, seconded by Counsel Ron Cormier, to send the item to first printing. Is there discussion on the motion? Counsel Boone?
Madam President, I'd like to split the motion into the mayor's salary, the city council's salary, and the school committee's salary as separate votes as to whether or not we are going to approve the increase.
Motion to split the question?
That's a motion, please.
Motion made by Counsel Boone to split the question. Is there discussion, is there a second? Seconded by Counsel Harder. Is there discussion? Counsel Walsh?
I'm going to oppose the motion. It's about time we deal with this thing and deal with it directly as a group. Doesn't affect any of us unnecessarily unless we're elected at our, at the next election if we choose to run. It'll affect, though, only those who will be elected at our next annual election and thereafter. I think we should, all of these have been woefully deficient in being addressed on an ongoing basis. I think we deal with it once and deal with it effectively. I would oppose the motion to divide the question.
Further discussion? Counsel Boone?
Thank you, Madam President. As a city councilor, and there are several cities and towns that don't get paid anything. And we're fortunate that we're getting paid to do our business, which I appreciate. But, and, and I, and I believe the mayor duly deserves a higher salary. But, when you got selectmen from surrounding towns don't get paid a penny, and we're getting paid, you know, some amount of money, I, I, I think that I oppose that we're going to get a raise. And I, I know that others have got two percent. My, my point is, is that I think we're paid fairly, and that's why I wanted to divide the question. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counsel Craig Cormier?
I'll also oppose this, this move, similar to Counsel Walsh's comments. I don't think we should make this political. Again, this affects none of us unless we happen to run and get elected in the next election cycle. So I'd rather see us, we, we have a habit of splitting this out and, and taking it down on a biannual basis. So I'd rather see us attack this as a whole. So I will oppose that.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counsel Heath?
So, I guess this message is more for the, those that are watching at home. Because I was sitting here and I'm looking at the mayor's, how much he gets paid. And no disrespect to you, mayor, but I make that putting chips on the shelves. I don't run the whole city. I can tell you that right now. All I do is throw up a couple of chips on the shelves, and I get exactly what his salary is. And I don't have a whole city to run. So, much respect for what you do, for what you, for what you're getting paid. And for those that are at home counting a dollar. And for those that are at home counting the dollars, I mean, the average after the raise, city councillors get paid $20.47 a day. City president, I mean, sorry, council president gets $29.92 a day. To be on call, messages 24 hours a day, I think that it's not a bad rate for those who may take our spots in the next election, whether it's us or others. And I think the rate is appropriate. I didn't look up the math on the school council. So I just wanted to go ahead and go say, because I know there's going to be messages where, you know, comments and people think that we all get all this big money, but I spend $20 at Starbucks every morning. It didn't get me. So if you catch me in the line, it's $20 going. All right? So that's all. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counselor Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. I will not be supporting splitting the question. I believe each of the three different roles, and the two, the council and the committees, are important values to the city, and I think it's about time, you know, this is a political question in front of us, and I think it's a matter of doing our jobs. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counselor Harder?
Yes. I did not second this because it's a political move for me, and I don't believe Counselor Boone did that as well. I, over the many years, I've always been no on these raises. As to what Counselor Heath said, spot on. This mayor, or any mayor sitting here, really does deserve more money. They're on duty 24 hours a day, and not just during the week, all the time, seven days a week. As for splitting up the question, my thought was, because of the fact that, you know, some will say it's a conflict of interest that we're really getting our own raises, it's not, because this doesn't start till the next term, and some of us might not even be here. I just thought it would give each of us a chance, a choice, to vote separately. That's all. But I do support the raise for this mayor's position. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counselor Ron Cormier?
Finance Committee, the council did have an informal meeting on this, where we discussed and had an opportunity to discuss the various insubstantial steps in all three blocks. And again, it's been said, and has to be repeated often, that this is not for this council, it is not for this mayor. It is for the position of the school committee, of the mayor, of the council, whoever they might be in the future. It's the future of our city. It's our responsibility to act upon it, and there is no other way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counselor Tisoni?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. You know, spending time on the school committee for six years, spending, formerly spending time on the city council for four years, and now as, back on the city council as Ward Three city councillor, you know, and I've seen what the mayor does, I've seen what the city council does, and I've seen what the school committee does. And I truly believe that it should be treated as one, as many of us have said. It needs to be evaluated, and to the point where, this is for next year. If people want to come out and run against each one of us, this is what we're doing here. We're giving the opportunity, which it's minimal impact when you think about it, but understood that the job that we do is 24/7 if needed. And if we do our jobs correctly, we're there when people have questions, and we're there to answer their questions and get solutions for their problems. So I'm in favor of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? This is a vote on whether or not to split the question. The clerk will please call the roll. Counselor Boone?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
No.
Counselor Ronna Cormier?
No.
Counselor Dernalowicz?
No.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Heath?
No.
Counselor Mack?
No.
Counselor Tison?
No.
Counselor Tyros?
No.
Counselor Walsh?
No.
President Kuzinska? No. Nine, two ayes, nine noes. Motion does not pass. On the original motion to approve the 2% compounded raise made by Counselor Dernalowicz, seconded by Counselor Ron Cormier, is there a discussion on the motion? Counselor Walsh?
She'll point of orders to send it to a first printing.
I'm sorry. Yes, to send it to first printing. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Mack?
In the amended proposal included FWA 2025, that was being, according to the Finance Committee meeting, is that in our packet? Because I'm having a hard time finding that in our packet. It's your, President Kuzinska, is this your original proposal?
Original proposal, the 2% proposal's not in the packet?
It's not in the packet?
Right.
Okay. So I mean, so I guess my question is, can we vote on what we have now and then?
Well, we're saying it's first printing.
You said it's first printing and then due, okay. Perfect. And I just wanted to, as discussion to this, that I brought this up in June because I wanted to open this discussion. I have felt, before I even became on the council, that I thought the mayor's position was grossly underpaid, and that's why I wanted to start the discussion. And another reason I felt that I could do this as a city councillor is, for the first three years of being on the city council, I did not receive compensation, because I was already a city employee, and a lot of people don't realize that. So most of us here who are serving put in a lot of hours and a lot of time, and it's not necessarily for the money. It's a stipend, and it is well deserved from the people at this table, the school committee, that, for the hours that are put in. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? This requires a two-thirds vote, and it's a roll call vote. The clerk will please call the roll. Counselor Boone?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Dernalowicz?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Tison?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
President Kuzinska? Yes. Eleven ayes, the motion passes. Item 10905 was taken up at the beginning of the meeting, under Appointments Committee, Safety Committee. Item 10861, ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner, Chapter 600, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Section 42, entitled One Way Street. Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. The Safety Committee actually met this morning, and we discussed this item again. While we had previously agreed to recommend this ordinance in discussion with our new Safety Committee member and the Ward Three councillor, we have decided we will approach the Chief of Police to look at doing a 60-day trial of this, which he has the power to do. It'll give us a little bit more information before we actually move forward with this ordinance. So if there's no objection, we'll keep this on the calendar and just request more time while we get that in motion.
So the committee will be granted more time if there is no objection? The committee will be granted more time? Item 10906, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner by adding a new Chapter 502 to be entitled "Mobile Food Operations," which chapter provides for the regulations for operating food truck services in the city. Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. We discussed this item this morning with the mayor. You have information in your packets as well. Currently, we have no regulations that can be enforced on food trucks, and we do have a growing number of food trucks in the city. This ordinance will provide for required registration with the police department, as well as Department of Health, which means these food trucks can be inspected, and the zoning board to make sure that they're properly placed, and give us the power to request trucks to move if there are complaints on placement. So the committee discussed this. We're unanimously in favor, and I move the order to first printing.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Cormier, Craig Cormier, seconded by Counselor Tisoni, to send the item to first printing. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Service Committee, item 10907, a petition by National Grid to install new handhole in accordance with the plan filed here with marked Edgel Street to install new handhole at the edge of the 69 Edgel Street property at approximately 42.577342 longitude and negative 71.982237 latitude, install two to three inches of conduit from pole six, Edgel Street, to new handhole pole. Counselor Walsh?
Yes, the Safe, excuse me, the Service Committee met on this last Thursday on all three of these petitions that are before the committee, or on the committee's agenda. The first one, the city engineer had looked into this with National Grid, because National Grid refuses to send a representative to the Service Committee meetings, and if they had done so, many of the questions that had been raised, that were raised during the public hearing tonight probably could have been addressed and answered. As it turns out, there is a master plan for removing poles on private property. And we were informed that this, these three items are associated with certain elements of that master plan. This particular one has to do with relocating wires into a ground location that's in the public way. The city engineer had no problem with it. I believe the person affected by the public hearing today had no problem with it. The committee voted unanimously to recommend passage of the approval of the petition, and I move it.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Walsh, seconded by Counselor Tyros, to approve the petition. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Item 10908, a petition by National Grid and Verizon New England Incorporated, Edgel Street, to relocate one jointly owned pole on Edgel Street, beginning at a point approximately 300 feet east of the center line of the intersection of Westford Street and Edgel Street, relocate pole number eight approximately 45 feet east of its current location. Counselor Walsh?
Yes, similarly, the city engineer did not have a problem with this particular one, and it has to do with relocating a pole that is on private property onto the city's right of way. Part of that master plan that was reported earlier, the committee voted unanimously to recommend approval of the petition, I move it.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Walsh, seconded by Counselor Tyros, to approve the petition. Is there a discussion on the motion? Counselor Walsh?
Once again, I'm happy that we don't get a representative of the, of National Grid or Verizon, whoever is the petitioner, to come to our meetings. We've asked on numerous occasions that they do so, they refuse. And if they're not going to do that, they need to send somebody to the public hearing who knows what's going on, because the presentation made today by the representative from National Grid was woefully deficient in having an understanding of these petitions, what's associated with them, being in a position to answer questions of the residents who are affected by it. They need to do a better job.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Tisoni?
I agree 100%. It was an embarrassment. And I just want to thank the Service Committee for doing their due diligence and having the answers to the questions from a plan perspective. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Item 10909, a petition by National Grid and Verizon New England Incorporated, Cross Street, to install four jointly owned poles on Cross Street, beginning at a joint, at a point approximately 15 feet north of the center line of the intersection of Lawrence Street and Cross Street, and continuing approximately 800 feet in a west direction, install four new poles on Cross Street. Counselor Walsh?
Yes, this has to do with relocating poles and some across the street. The plan that was provided does not show the location of lines between the poles, because some cross the street and some don't. The committee voted to request more time, and the city engineer submitted information to the petitioners requesting not only that they provide a new plan showing not only the pole locations, but the location of lines that will be passing between them and among them, and also requesting that they state the locations of the poles with particularity so that we can understand, so that when we go, he goes out to make a site visit and inspection, he knows exactly where the pole locations are going to be. So the committee requests more time.
If there's no objection, the committee will be granted more time? The committee will be granted more time. Fall Fair Committee, item 10891, ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner, Chapter 675 thereof, entitled zoning, to change the classification of certain parcels of lands along Route 140. Counselor Mack?
We request more time as the planning board hasn't had a chance to meet. It will be meeting on March 14th, and a joint meeting of the planning board and the city council, and a public hearing has been scheduled for March 20th at 6:00 p.m.
If there is no objection, the committee will be granted more time? The committee will be granted more time. Item 10892, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner, Chapter 675 thereof, entitled zoning, to add sports betting to the zoning table of uses. Counselor Mack?
Yes, with the previous item and the next item, we will request more time until the planning board has a chance to meet, and the joint meeting of the planning board and city council occurs on March 20th with the public hearing.
If there's no objection, the committee will be granted more time? The committee will be granted more time. Item 10893, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner, Chapter 675 thereof, entitled zoning, to amend Section 1070 thereof, entitled marijuana establishments, to increase the quota allowed by the code of the City of Gardner. Counselor Mack?
Yes, we request more time until the planning board has a chance to meet and the joint meeting occurs on March 20th with the public hearing.
If there's no objection, the committee will be granted more time? The committee will be granted more time. Unfinished business and matters for reconsideration, item 10890, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner, Section 2 of Chapter 13, entitled Council on Aging Membership Terms of Office. Counselor Mack?
I make a motion to send this to second and final printing.
Motion made by Counselor Mack, seconded by Counselor Craig Cormier, to send the item to second and final printing. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Item 10896, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner, Chapter 22, entitled Assessing Department. Counselor Dernalowicz?
Thank you, Madam President. I move to send this to second and final printing.
Motion made by Counselor Dernalowicz, seconded by Counselor Tyros, to send the item to second and final printing. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Moving into new business, Counselor Heath?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to go ahead and take quick time to go ahead and recognize, T, Wednesday is International Women's Day. For those that don't know, International Women's Day is a global day celebrating the social, economic, cultural, and political achievements of women. I just want to go ahead and say thank you for everything that you do for us. You make it a lot easier for me, I know that much. I can't speak for everybody else. And at the same time, it is, I guess it's Girls' History Month. I know it's nothing that's really spoke about, but I just want to say thank you, women, for everything that you guys do. T, I'll be dropping you off flowers on Wednesday. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. Nothing new this evening.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Dernalowicz?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Mack?
I have no new business this evening. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Tisoni?
Yes, upcoming COVID shingles in pneumonia vaccine clinic, Monday 3:13 at the Senior Center, from 12:30 to 5:00. Registration for the shingles and pneumonia vaccine ends today, so I'm not sure if there's still time today to register for that, but COVID walk-in, walk-ins are welcome, and that's at the Senior Center on Monday 3:13, 3:13. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Craig Cormier?
Nothing this evening, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Boone?
May I, Madam President? Just going back to a point I brought up earlier, I really like the, the mayor and the Finance Committee to consider mileage reimbursements rather than purchasing a, a complete vehicle. I know it's worked in my business, so I'd just like them to put that on the, the agenda to consider that. Thank you, Madam President. That's all.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Harder?
Nothing new this week, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Walsh?
Yes, just a comment about item number one zero eight nine one, the zoning amendment having to do with changing the zone of certain properties along Route one forty in Green Street. That's pending before the planning boards, pending before us at a later date after the public hearing and the action by the planning board. The explanation given and the just, the rationale being given for the need to make these zoning changes from a current residential two district to a commercial and industrial district is to restrict residential development along a major thoroughfare. Two things come to my mind about this. One is that I read in the paper just this morning that there is a housing crisis in the state, that there is a deficiency of new housing opportunities in the state that needs to be addressed on an emergency basis. And we're considering a measure that would restrict residential development going in exactly the wrong direction, in my opinion. The second thing that comes to mind is that many of the parcels that are included in the zone to be changed are owned by the city. So why are we concerned with properties that are owned by the city with the explosion of residential development in a bad area? That doesn't make sense to me. So I'm just wondering if there's some other reason, some other explanation that we're not being told about that is behind the need or the proposed need to rezone these areas. I'm very suspicious of it.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Ron Cormier?
I have nothing this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I have no new business. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn after the closing prayer. Motion made by Counselor Craig Cormier, seconded by Counselor Tisoni. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. The motion passes.
Almighty Father, who sees over all, as we adjourn, we thank thee for the opportunity to our deliberation and action with this during the course of this meeting. Blessed, O Lord, all those gathered here and the people who represent we are, in the light of heaven, to our common welfare, until our next meeting. Amen.
Thank you, everyone.